Councilman Tenny?
Yes.
And the record will reflect that Councilman Sishka is excused from the meeting.
Well, thanks, everyone, for braving the weather to show up today. I appreciate that. Our first item is a discussion and presentation regarding the Launchpad Teen Center's Better Together campaign.
Today, we're going to be presenting about our Better Together campaign with the Launchpad. I am Gianna Franz, and I've been on TAC for a year.
And I'm Tessa Martinez. I've been on TAC for about two years now, and I'm also Vice President on their board. So, the Teen Advisory Council really started this Better Together campaign when we saw the division in the community with all the protests that were happening. So, I joined TAC then because a group of us teens really saw the division, and we wanted to make a change in the community. So, we saw that no one knew how to have a civil discourse at all, and we really wanted just to teach people how to have a conversation and how to be open-minded.
So, what our campaign is about is, with the Launchpad's support, our goal is to really spread the awareness of respecting civil discourse and basically try to isolate the issues in our community and provide steps and tips on how to mend that division that we are seeing in our community. So, in order to do that, the first phase of this project was to develop a survey to isolate those issues, and it's just, it was a quick little survey that asks what you find important in your community and what you find difficult to talk about, and what divisions you're noticing, and where those occur. And so, we've already completed that stage, and we are on our way to collecting that data, analyzing it, and providing a method that goes over tools and tips that we can then spread throughout our families and in our community.
So, a few weekends ago, we went on a retreat to really analyze this data, and so, a few main points is 81% of the surveys, which we got, 827, I believe, surveys, 81% of them say that they feel there is a division in the community. And then, also, that most people feel comfortable talking with their family or within their church. And so, with this guidebook, we're going to collect even more of this data and little tips on how to have discussions. Like, it's okay to step away from discussion if you see someone is shutting down, and also points of how to notice if someone's shutting down in a conversation. So, with this guidebook, hopefully, it will give this to 200 families and have family dinners and really help these families work through how to have a communication with each other.
Yeah, so just to go into more depth about what Tessa was talking about, the family dinners, our goal with this guidebook is to make sure it reaches as many people as possible in the community, is to send it out to families who sign up, which we're in the process of creating the sign-up, and so, that's one of the reasons why we really wanted to talk with all of you today, is to really get that outreach and really take that final step in our project. And basically, what we're doing is we have this book full of tips and just questions or outlines on encouraging family dinner conversation, and what we want our families to do is to just take notes on what went well, what was productive in their conversations, what didn't work, or any tips and feedbacks that they have on our guidebook, so that way, we can further publish it and make it more in-depth and hopefully expand it into local coffee shops or local businesses within our community.
And then, so after we have these quarterly dinners in the future, we're hoping to have bigger dinners, so the community dinners, and have smaller groups within, so you can practice your skills that you've learned over these quarterly dinners with new people and have that community connection with each other.
So, this was our survey that, we've already analyzed all the data, so our survey is closed. You can, or the link on there, thebettertogethertalks.com, is our website that we worked with, website designer to actually create to stay in touch with our community. The QR code for our website is on the flyer that we passed out. So, if you want to stay in touch or if you want to spread the word about our community, just going on our website and giving us your contact information would be really beneficial for us. And also, if you want to participate in the family conversations, that's also another way that we can keep in touch with all of you.
That was it. Thank you for letting us present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I want to commend the both of you for coming here and talking. I know it's not easy to get up and talk to a roomful of people like this, so glad you came and shared what you're doing. I'd also commend you for your efforts to find things, find a way to be a part of a solution. I know that, speaking for myself, I grew up in this community as a teenager when there was no Launchpad or organization to help teens or support teens in this community, and I'm raising a daughter who is 16, who is actually a member of the Board of Launchpad. And so, I recognize the value that you bring to this community and the capacity that you're giving teens. And I think this conversation that you're having right now is especially important in this time that we're in. There's a lot of partisan divide. I'm an independent, registered independent, and even when I was running for this nonpartisan office, one of the most frequent questions I got was what political party I belong to. And I believe local governance doesn't involve party personally, and I think that we need to look past party and look at what brings us together. I particularly like, in your presentation and your program, the idea of breaking bread with people. I'll tell you, in my experience, that one of the easiest ways to bridge, divide, and gaps between folks is to share a meal and commune with people. In my religion, that is a big component of our faith, and so, I commend you for that approach as well, and I think this is good work. I know your organization has had its share of detractors. That's true of any organization. I would encourage you to not lose heart, to keep up the work that you're doing and to continue to endeavor to bridge people together. So, thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rusin.
Thank you. I'd like to point out that a lot of skills were involved in what you're doing today that can be applied to the workforce, public speaking, putting together presentations, websites, and I'm very impressed that these skills are being learned in such a way at the Launchpad. Thank you.
Councilwoman Cantelme.
Thank you for coming here today, ladies. I wished I'd had this pamphlet as I walked into my Thanksgiving dinner this year. In fact, you might want to consider sticking one of these inside the turkeys in all the grocery stores, and then provide a referee. But thanks for doing this. I think your generation, we were just talking about this, we were in the back chambers here about your generation and how hooked on the technologies and the social stuff today, and how a lot of the kids today miss this one-on-one contact with human beings, looking somebody in the eye, standing up straight, conveying yourself with some authority. So, what you're doing today is great for your generation, and I hope you guys can be the pillar that most of people in this community look to and encourage them to get out and interact with human beings. Those are skills that are better taught, and I think everybody would be better off in the long run if you have those skills polished. But anyway, just for marketing, make sure that gets inside the turkey next time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or concerns? Do we have any public comment?
We do, Mayor. Eileen Wolf.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilpeople. I represent Free America July 4th. We need to protect the religious views of all faiths, not just what is in vogue at the moment. We need students to feel free to draw, write, speak, pray, and have their religious views and after-school activities be protected since it is enshrined in our Constitution. Students must be able to state their views without pushback from anyone and any organization. Free America July 4th stands with our students in promoting and encouraging their families to lead and guide them in all aspects. The parents are the guiding force in their children's lives, no one else. Parents should be able to formulate the activities for their children. They have the right to be aware and to be able to skip the activities if they are against their morals and their religious beliefs. And when parents are skipping the activities that are involved in the Launchpad, they must be offered an alternative activity which the parents approve of, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
David Segal? I hope I said that correctly.
Very close.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, everybody. Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers, I hope you're doing well, and happy holidays to you both. I'd like to start off by asking the City Council a question. How many of you have gone to the website, The Launchpad? How many of you have looked at their survey? How many of you understand their underlying purpose? And I keep saying the two. Okay, so let's take a deep dive. This is not necessarily about these young ladies coming here. It's about what is the underlying agenda of The Launchpad? And let me quote to you, if I may, directly from their website. "The Launchpad, inciting not I-N-S-I-G-H-T, but I-N-C-I-T." Hopefully, we all know the difference in the spelling and the definition. "Inciting teen confidence and empowerment through innovative community education and engagement. We are all-inclusive, youth-driven, and focused space, providing programming," not programs, "but providing programming that is culturally relevant to teens in Yavapai County." So, my first question is, who determines what is culturally relevant? Number two, I hope each of you understands the difference between an activity and a program versus the difference of what programming is. And I will quote, if I may, "Programming is brainwashing." I will also quote from the organization that they affiliate with, and this also comes from The Launchpad, "Today's youth, tomorrow's future. The Launchpad has partnered with One in Ten to bring you meaningful LGBTQ-specific programming every week." The Launchpad and who they affiliate with are indoctrination organizations, and they openly admit it because they use the word "programming" repeatedly. One in Ten, if I may, here's one of their activities that they provide on a regular, ongoing basis. Queer story of art program. Each week, you'll meet a local artist who specializes in a different art form, including painting, sculpture, theater, drag, and poetry. Now, I don't know about you, but this is not the type of indoctrination that I would expect this board here in Prescott would approve of. Additionally, let me go on. Another regular, repeated activity, the Zone. The Zone is for young men of color ages, 14 to 24, to connect with one another. What is a 14-year-old child doing connecting with a 24-year-old adult, unsupervised and without the parent's authority? Immediately, it brought to my mind the acronym, I'm sure you're all aware of it, NAMBLA, North American Boy Love Association. In doing additional research, there is great synergy between the LGBTQ community and NAMBLA. Is this what this board wants to be responsible for promoting? I would say not. The fact is, if you go to these websites, if you do your research, if you look at what their underlying message is, it is clearly indoctrination. Everything referenced talks about programming. The Launchpad has partnered with One in Ten to bring you meaningful LGBTQ-specific programming. Do your research, do your work, look beneath the surface. Now, I commend these two young ladies for being here today. I know how challenging it can be to do public speaking, and I commend them for reading what they already have up there. But if you also look at their survey, their survey is asking very, very specific, private questions that should not be asked of young adults, should not be asked of minors, and that survey is for one purpose and one purpose only, and I speak from background experience. I was in marketing for 35 years. It is for targeted marketing, for targeted money, and for targeted votes. I urge this council not to move forward now that you at least know some of the underlying directives that these organizations provide. They are not what they appear to be on the surface. Thank you.
Councilman Moore.
First, is there any more public comment?
We do have a few more cards, yes.
If you don't mind, I'll defer till we're done with public comment before I make my remarks.
Do we have a timeframe on these public comments?
Should be, yeah, three minutes.
That was a little longer than three minutes. That's my guess.
Andy Nelson.
Mayor, City Council, I've never been here before. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Andy Nelson, and I have a business here in town for over 21 years, and I've always strived to treat people with respect regardless of their race, gender, any background whatsoever. It's, treat people the same wherever I, whatever I've tried to do. I am a person of faith and have beliefs and standards that don't agree with an LGBT lifestyle and yet can still be loving, respectful, and caring. I understand that there are also some who don't feel or believe the same, and those who identify otherwise may live their lives in our free society of a democratic republic under the U.S. Constitution and our state laws. I come before the City Council today not knowing what the nature of this presentation was going to be like, and it was very well-done, and I also applaud these two young ladies. I'm also currently enrolled, I hope I still will be, in dinner conversations, and so, I come before you today as a traditional value citizen, local business owner, who questions any kind of additional laws, ordinances, or even proclamations that would add to or take away from our current Arizona Revised Statute 41-1463 on unlawful discrimination practices. Government has no business compelling diversity, equity, and inclusion training or virtue signaling to displace good judgment and free will. I hope that everyone can practice the golden rule to love their neighbors as themselves and that all people can feel welcome in our city, but we cannot force, mandate, fine, or otherwise penalize any citizen from their free exercise of speech and their First Amendment rights. We must learn to disagree agreeably without imposing any further bureaucratic measures. I happen to disagree with Launchpad's practice of holding a Q prom with a drag queen makeover and PUSD's partnership agreement that exposes our children to social contagion and gender-affirming ideologies, furthering the gender identity crisis of our youth. On the other hand, I respect Courtney Osterfeldt and her efforts with The Launchpad to be an ally for disenfranchised youth, providing tutoring, career training, a safe space, and wholesome entertainment. I am, I already mentioned, I'm currently enrolled in the Better Together Dinner Conversations program and look forward to that opportunity. As I review the survey briefly that has been prepared by The Launchpad, it asks about strong division in our community in a leading fashion, about being misunderstood or people lacking the skills to have respectful conversations. These subjective topics are fine to develop better conversations but cannot be regulated by government nor can feeling be legislatively controlled. Let us be very careful about social change agenda entering into our city government and allow freedom to continue here without compulsory impairment. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Ruth, I am going to mispronounce this last name. I'm sorry. Ashkenazi.
Hi, thank you. My name's Ruth Ashkenazi. I live in Prescott, moved here two years ago, and we're really grateful to be here. Thank you, Tessa Giovanna. Thanks so much. I just want to propose something. I want to propose that everyone here get together after this meeting at some point for one of those meals. We suspect one another of a whole lot. There's a lack of trust for sure, and there's a need to talk about this because, yes, we are divided along political lines for sure, but I think we all have a lot of ego involved in what we're saying and what we are offering the community. And I think to sit down and state our piece genuinely, if we have a political bias, to be clear about it, right? And I think we're not always as clear as we should be about where we stand politically, so a lot of people feel like we're sliding stuff in, and in fact, we very well might be. So, let's be honest with one another about where we're coming from. Let's talk about it, and let's break out that pamphlet. Okay, now, I just want to say one thing about the Better Together workshop, which I attended in April of 2021 because I was curious. In fact, I established a Braver Angels chapter in Silicon Valley because I was really worried about the partisan divide and people not talking to one another. During the Braver, the Better Together workshop, what concerned me was an emphasis on victimization, of perceiving people of color primarily as victims and sensitizing people to this. Now, I can understand the importance, the crucial importance of learning our history and not repeating mistakes of the past, but what I don't understand is an emphasis on victimization because this empowers nobody. If we are taught to look at certain people as victims, we are not helping them. What we might be doing, in fact, is feeling somehow better than they are because they're the victims and we're not. That's the wrong way to go about empowering people in our community and elsewhere. And I just want that to be my heads-up about what I experienced in that workshop, what was most concerned to me, and I, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lawrence Nigel.
Good afternoon, members of, honorable members of the council. Mr. Mayor, my compliments to you, young ladies, for your presentation. I come from a background of serving on a Board of Education for over 20 years, and I've worked with young people from kindergarten all the way through high school. I was a police explorer advisor to young people and watched them grow and become productive adults in the emergency services within the community in which I come from. That community was San Bernardino, California. I was raised there, educated there, served for 35 years on the PD, 20, over 20 years on the Board of Education. I watched a community deteriorate, and the basis of that deterioration was groups and organizations that infiltrated the cloth of the community with left-wing, far-extreme, left-wing ideological theories. And it went from a great place to grow up with, ended up being what I call the armpit of California. It was terrible what happened in that community, and I certainly would not like to see anything close happen to the community of Prescott. You have an obligation as City Council, as members of the Board of Supervisors, and other governing agencies, even the Board of Education, not to fund. First, let me say thank you very much for opening this to the young people. Never do we want to thwart their right to free speech and free expression. However, the ideologies that this Launchpad produces is going to harm, eventually harm young people in the future. I could tell right away, but it'll happen. You have a responsibility to guard against funding financially or otherwise supporting programs that do a subversive effort to change the minds and indoctrinate children. A recent study came out that 98% of our professors in the state colleges across the country are left-wing liberal people, and they have successfully, over the last three decades or more, indoctrinated young people who are now adults, setting extreme liberal policies, and we don't want that to happen in the future. Please, look into the matters before you grant authority or before you grant funding to any organization that continues to indoctrinate the young minds of people, and particularly without their parents' consent. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Mayor, can I ask a very quick question?
Sorry.
Just before we, I'm sorry, not of our speaker. Good to see you, by the way. Former neighbor of mine. Is, was this presentation really seeking support or voting from the city today? Because I've heard a couple of people reference that, so it seems we're likely beyond the mark.
Simply a presentation about their Better Together campaign.
Okay, so legally, our comments are supposed to be limited to that. Am I correct?
Technically, you're correct.
I see. Thank you.
Andrew Baird.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Andrew Baird, live in Prescott, born and raised here. I am the president of the Launchpad Teen Center, been so for six years, been on the Board for seven years since I moved back here. I just have to say this, that first of all, thank you to everyone here for the support of the Better Together campaign, which is the purpose of this presentation together, really talking about ways to work through civil discourse, and this was run by our Teen Advisory Council. Tessa Martinez led that, and she is now an adult Board Vice President. She's been on the Board for the last couple of years. I just have to say, there's, there's been several unfortunate comments here today. Some are using the platform to speak out against the Launchpad, citing certain things as harm to teenagers and other items of that nature. I'll just say this, come by and see the space anytime. We have an open house quarterly. You can arrange with me to come by and see it, and what I, when I hear harming of teenagers, come by the space and see what teenagers are doing there. There is an art room where you'll see beautiful artwork being created. There is a teen-run coffee shop. There is a Teen Advisory Council that meets monthly to talk about Better Together and other items that'll grow this community. You'll see us for our monthly Board meetings where we have half-teens and half-adults that are making decisions for the organization. I just met Lily Montoya, who is now our Board Vice President. Congratulations. So, again, I'll just say that we are open to anybody to come and see truly what we are all about as an organization and is to help the teens in this community grow and thrive. There are current leaders and future leaders of this community, and I think it's important to continue to support what we are doing. Again, I grew up here. There was no such thing as the Launchpad when I was here. So, after school, I was playing sports a lot of times. Sometimes I'd be putzing around trying to find something to do. Sometimes that involved maybe going out and egging cars and destroying property while I was bored. So, come by to the space. We're open until 10:00 at night if you want to come and join a skate club or if you want to be Dungeons and Dragons, and truly come see what we are about. It's, again, it's about supporting those most important to this community, and that's the teenagers here in town. Thank you.
Michelle Hammer.
Hello, sorry I'm late. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and I'm sorry I didn't get to see the, the presentation, but I've been very familiar with the Launchpad for the last two years and keeping an eye on them, and I think that they do a lot of wonderful things, and I appreciate it for that. But one of the alarming things that I see happening within our teen centers and our schools is the sexual conversations. These are minors. We need to keep sexual conversations out of the classrooms and out of our teen centers. I mean, if any of you go to the office and you ask the other person about their sexual preference, you could get a sexual harassment suit filed on you, and I think we need to do that, and the same thing with the schools. Adults should not be talking to their children, or to minors, about their sexual preference. When you do- When you do gay pride and you talk about homosexuality, that's a minor telling you that they want to have sex with the same sex. Even if it was an individual who was not homosexual, that talk shouldn't be in the schools either. So what I would like to do is look at some of the memorandums of understandings with the Launchpad. And I have a big problem with the 1-10 and the Q-Prom and a lot of the other things that they do with the LGBT community. Can we keep sexual conversations out of our classrooms and out of our teen centers and make it wholesome again? Let's make our, let's make our classrooms and our teens wholesome again. I have a 15-year-old granddaughter and she goes down to Liberty High School in Peoria. And she is disgusted by all of the talk about sexual preference. She says, Nana, you know, I don't even like to hear about my mom and dad talking about sex. It gives me the creeps. But then when it's school, that's really permeates because it's the cool thing to be. And she said, I don't want to hear it. And every time I've stepped up and said, I don't want to hear about you having sex with the same person, same-sex person or a different-sex person. Please, can we stop it? And she gets called homophobic. And so there's a lot of kids at school that really don't appreciate that. And I think that might be something that we could do on a survey with the school and with the teen center. Do the kids really want to hear all about people having sex? Or should it be something more in the line of an education, history, mathematics? Because that's what they go to school for. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
That's all we have.
That's all we have. Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to to share my thoughts regarding this presentation and to the two young ladies who presented. Great job. Thank you, Eileen, David, Andy, Ruth, Lawrence, Andrew and Michelle for your comments. I think the first thing we need to remember, that love is the answer. There's a lot of judgment here today. It's not appropriate. Love is the answer. I think we need to look at the value that the teen center is providing for the community, for those who need and want the teen center. You know, Eileen, you talked about how it's a parent's role to provide this teaching for the children. But there are a lot of children that don't have parents that provide that role and don't do that teaching. My wife and I had the opportunity to do foster care for many years. There are a lot of children who are lost and don't have direction because they didn't get it in the home. And they're looking for direction and they need guidance. And I appreciate Lawrence's comments, I don't know where he went. Thank you, Lawrence, about the deterioration of society. But it's not because of teen centers, it's because of the breakdown of the family. It's no dads in the home, it's divorce, it's a lot of things. It's not because of a teen center. And we need to put our perspectives correct on this. And I just want to thank Ruth for her comment. I think it's a great idea, Ruth, that we all sit down and have dinner together, all of us in this room. Let's sit down, let's have some civil discourse. And let's really talk about what's happening at the Launchpad and how it's benefiting our community. Those are my comments, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Moore. Mayor Proten.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question, Andrew, if you can answer a question for me, or Courtney, whoever wants to answer this question. Is anyone, are any of the kids who go to the Launchpad, are they compelled to go there? Like, do you physically kidnap them and bring them to the Launchpad? I know that's an absurd question. I just, based on some of the comments I've heard, it would leave me the impression that at some point, parents surrender their rights and turn them over to the Launchpad. Is that happening?
No.
Okay. I didn't think so. And the reason I know that, because no parent who is worth their salt would do that. And so I have to operate under the understanding that the kids who are showing up to the Launchpad are showing up because they want to be there. Is that a correct characterization?
Yeah, that's 100% accurate.
Okay. And again, like you, I grew up in this town. I didn't just move here from California five minutes ago. I've been here since I was 11. And I know what it was like to grow up in this community without a place like this. And so it's offensive to me that you take it away from kids, my kids. I have two kids, one 16 and one is six. And you guys are attacking a place for children. The nerve that you have.
You're attacking my client.
No, hey, you're not recognized, sir. Let me finish my comments. So it is offensive to me that you would attack it. Now, if you're like Ruth Ashkenazi and you want to come and be part of the solution, that's one thing. But if you're going to subject all of us to hear your accusations that are unfounded, that's another thing. And it's not fair. I'm sorry. Like, this is, for me, it's personal. I was a kid who got into trouble too, and I didn't have a place to go. And so you're, I think, this is the thing that I've seen happen in this community, and this is the deterioration that I see happening in this community, is the politicization of every single organization. It's unnecessary. It happened when I ran for office here. It happened in the recent school board election we had. Listen, Prescott's a fine community. Just because you came from wherever in California and you think you need to, you're afraid it's going to turn into California, I don't know. Like, just pause for a minute and look at where you're at and look at where the values are in this community and you'll realize you don't have to, you know, put down your pitchforks. Sit down, break bread with people. I think Ruth, I agree with Councilman Moore. Ruth's point is great. Sit down, talk to the people. Be part of the organization. Build bridges. Those are my comments.
Can I, I just, I just, I hear what you're saying and I appreciate you responding to me. We all need to put down our pitchforks. We all have pitchforks up. And we are only going to genuinely progress if we all put those pitchforks down and talk about our concerns and recognizing that we all have well-intentioned concerns. We're all afraid of something and our fears may be very, very legitimate. So unless we relate to one another as though our fears are all legitimate, we're not going to get anywhere. It's just going to get worse. Can I make one closing comment as the director? Because it doesn't have to, I don't have to be closing, but.
I agree that you're so right about that, Ruth. And one thing I think that's being overlooked is that the Launchpad is a youth-driven teen center. So while we do have adults who serve on the Board, we have an equal amount of teens who serve on the Board. And the reason we do that is we believe in the skill set it can build for them, but we also believe that they have real concerns that are often overlooked. And so the presentation that Tessa and Chiana gave today, and did a wonderful job on, by the way, they 100% created themselves. So it came from the survey that we've been doing yesterday. We had a whole staff retreat. And they didn't have the support of adults yesterday to create the survey. They created the slideshow on their own last week. They practiced the presentation on their own. So somebody made a comment about reading the slides. Yes, they read the slides, but those are words from their heart. Those are words from their experience in serving our community and it's words from their observations of watching what's happening today, which is adults who are afraid, and there's lots of valid reasons to be afraid right now, for adults who feel disconnected. And they're saying, okay, as the bench for the future of Prescott, we want to see people come together. And it's not about changing minds on things. As they said in their presentation, it's all about developing the skill set to look eye to eye, develop some empathy and see each other as humans again. And not to change minds, but to understand and maybe learn something about one another. And it's really that simple. And I think the comments that we've heard after their presentation really demonstrate the need to do exactly what our young people are asking us, bravely asking us to do. So that's all I have to say. Nice job.
Thank you. Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I would just like to remind the public that this is a non-voting session. It is a study session. And it's, the purpose of a study session is for members of the public to come and do presentations, to give them a platform to inform their elected officials as to what's going on. And it's also a platform for city staff to do presentations for us. And I'd like to comment that we have other teen-related clubs in town. We have Boys and Girls Club. And we also have, I forget the name of it, but it's a faith-based club that's out there at the fairgrounds that I believe is sports-oriented. And they are certainly welcome to come and do presentations and let people know that there's many options in the community. And also, I'd like to say that I believe that the Launchpad is pretty much self-funded. They do their own fundraising and they do not receive any funds at all from the City of Prescott, do they?
No.
Not that I'm aware of. Thank you.
Councilman Tenney.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to express my concern again that some of our comments were allowed to diverge from the agenda as known. I think that that may be a violation of open meeting laws and I'm concerned that we don't let that happen in the future. What our young ladies presented today sounded terrific. Courtney essentially said what I was thinking, which was that our comments afterwards and the dialogue, well, many of the things I agree with, there are things I don't agree with, but anyhow, it underscores the need that we have for some kind of framework in the community to talk about things that are difficult for people to talk about in ways that are kind and caring and not attacking. So I appreciated the presentation and wish that we could have kept all comments afterwards germane to the presentation and not a referendum on what we think about an organization in town one way or the other.
All right, very good. Thank you for your presentation. We'll move on to the next item on the study agenda, presentation and discussion regarding the city's pavement management program.
Interesting topic. You guys can stay.
Good afternoon. May I ask you a pardon?
Ashley, do you need water?
Thank you, excuse me. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. On a hopefully lighter note, we're going to talk about pavement management in this time.
That's not too light. The pavement's pretty heavy.
So anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Couch. I think you just cleared the room.
Anyway, I'm the Public Works Director for the City of Prescott. And we're going to talk about our pavement management program today. Outline of today's presentation, we're going to talk about, well, first, what is pavement management? Talk about the various pavement treatments. We're going to talk about the different techniques of pavement management. We're going to talk about infrastructure management services. It's a private company that we've hired to do an objective analysis of our roadways and talk about the pavement condition index, what it represents. Talk about the system status of our roadway network. Talk about our budget and then summarize and discuss a strategy for moving forward to make sure that our roads are in, kept in good shape. So the pavement management is a comprehensive program of life cycle maintenance of city streets. And the program objectives include to create an inventory and keep it current of all city of Prescott roads. As you're aware, development goes on, new roads are built, sometimes by the city, sometimes by others. And we need to keep our inventory accurate and up to date. Routine inspection and assessment of conditions. And we record all the maintenance history. And whenever we go out and do anything to a roadway that's maintenance-oriented, then we keep that in an asset management software called Lucidity. We prioritize projects for the best overall results and then we execute the projects. I want to focus today's conversation on asphalt pavement. We do have a few concrete pavements in the city. Those are taken care of differently. They tend to be a bit more durable. They do require some maintenance, but I'm going to focus on asphalt since that's a vast majority of our roadway network. So asphalt is a flexible pavement design. It doesn't derive strength from the surface that you see, the blacktop. It's really the underlying aggregate base and a compacted subgrade that gives it its strength. It's a flexible pavement design. And then those, all those layers are compacted. The biggest enemies to long-term pavement performance are water intrusion and freestyle. And we obviously have that here.
Right now.
Right now, as we speak.
Both.
So the first thing that we do to preserve pavements is called crack seal. And that's a very inexpensive way to keep water out of the aggregate base and out of the subgrade. We're not really filling the cracks. That's not the purpose. It's keeping water out of the, what's below the surface. It's a very effective maintenance tool and it maintains a structural integrity. And so we do that early on in a pavement's life. Next is rejuvenation. The bitumines in the asphalt are the binder. Basically, you have aggregate rock and you've got the binder, which is the bituminous material. It oxidizes in ultraviolet sunlight over time. And so when it, when that happens, it becomes kind of brittle, inelastic, and so some of the aggregate starts to pop. And so one of the things that we do is we apply a rejuvenator to, there are various types of emulsions that we lay on the roadway as shown here. And it can be applied multiple times. It maintains what I'll later explain is a pavement condition index or PCI for three to six years. It basically reverses that oxidation that occurs due to sunlight. And then moving on to more substantive pavement management techniques, we have chip, slurry and microseals. They are similar in that it's a small aggregate and some kind of binder or bituminous binder. And, but they're a little different as far as the actual composition. So I don't need to get into the actual differences between a chip seal and a slurry seal, but basically, they're all kind of doing the same thing. You're restoring the pavement surface and then you're also basically reversing the oxidation that sunlight and time do to pavement over time. And so that's the next step in the process. Next is what's called a mill and pave overlay, where basically, we go in and mill up the old asphalt down to a certain depth and go back and with a paving machine and put new asphalt on top of it. The depth is one to five inches. And then last is full-depth reconstruction. And that's basically, you're starting over. When a pavement gets so bad, you cannot even do a mill and overlay because the cracks will just propagate up to the surface. And so you basically are just starting over, rebuilding a roadway. That's reconstruction. That's very time-consuming, it's very expensive, and it's inconvenient to residents because it's not a quick treatment. So let's talk about planning. And basically, what I'm trying to show in this graph and some that follow is that you need to spend money keeping good roads in good shape. And that's relatively inexpensive. So the things I talked about early in the lifecycle of an asphalt, things like crack seal, things like a chip seal, for example, rejuvenator, things like that, those, if you look, those are like preservation techniques and they're relatively inexpensive and they can extend the life of pavement. If you don't do that, then the deterioration curve starts to steepen and you start getting into more expensive rehabilitation projects like the mill and resurfacing. And if you continue to let it deteriorate, then you're basically starting over, which is reconstruction. That's very expensive. So we're going to talk more about pavement condition index, but basically, on the left, it's basically an objective grade of the condition of the asphalt pavement. You go anywhere from zero to 100. And so if you, early in the lifecycle, if you spend $1 now to do things like crack seal or rejuvenator, chip seal, then if you do that, you're going to get, you're going to preserve that pavement.
Of course.
So let's talk about planning. And basically, what I'm trying to show in this graph and some that follow is that you need to spend money keeping good roads in good shape, and that's relatively inexpensive. So the things I talked about early in the lifecycle of an asphalt, things like crack seal, things like a chip seal, for example, rejuvenator, things like that, if you look, those are like preservation techniques, and they're relatively inexpensive, and they can extend the life of pavement. If you don't do that, then the deterioration curve starts to steepen, and you start getting into more expensive rehabilitation projects, like the mill and resurfacing. And if you continue to let it deteriorate, then you're basically starting over, which is reconstruction. That's very expensive. So we're going to talk more about pavement condition index, but basically, on the left, it's basically an objective grade of the condition of the asphalt pavement. You go anywhere from zero to 100. And so if you, early in the lifecycle, if you spend $1 now to do things like crack seal or rejuvenator, chip seal, then if you do that, you're going to get, you're going to preserve that pavement much longer than if you delay that, you're going to end up spending $8 on either a mill and overlay or reconstruction. And so basically, the message is you need to take care of what's good, which is a little reverse of what you might think is doing the worst roads first. But if you do the worst roads first, you're actually, your whole system's going to start deteriorating if you do it at the expense of your routine maintenance. So it's, the science of pavement management is the right treatment at the right time. So with regular maintenance, pavement lasts longer and costs less over its lifecycle. So we're providing a better overall riding surface for the visitors and for the residents that live here, and you're doing it at lower cost. So it's better in both ways. And also, by doing this regular maintenance, you're going to, you're going to keep your roadway network in good shape. I liken it to driving a car. If you don't change the oil, you don't change the brakes when needed, then basically, you're going to have more expensive repairs down the road, right? But if you do all this routine maintenance, then your car's going to last a lot longer. So if you do some of these techniques early, you can see that you're starting to get steep on the deterioration curve. But instead, you go back up, and then you goes back down, and then you do something else. And this is what we shoot for, is the red line. You ignore the routine maintenance, you end up with something like this, and basically, this ends up with a better roadway network that costs less. So what is IMS? Basically, it's an objective measurement. It used to be before 2019 that it was subjective, it was subjective. Inspector would go out there, project manager, take a look, it was boots on the ground. You take a look at it, you say, eh, I'm going to give that a 70, or I'm going to give that a 50, based on looking at it. Well, in 2019, we improved here in Prescott. We hired this company, and they have a van, as shown, has special equipment on it, lasers, takes photographs, and measures roughness. And it gives you an objective measurement of, and we drove the entire city, and so it gives you an objective measurement of your entire roadway network. And that's great data to inform the model that then tells us initially what recommendations come out of that, is what we should do first, what we should do next, what we should do next, and what we should defer until later. And we can also run different scenarios and say, okay, if we spend more money, what will that buy us? Or if we spend less money, what does that cost us in the long run? So you can model all these scenarios, and it'll ultimately optimize your design of your pavement management system, which roads you're going to do and what you're going to do to them. And you end up with these maps. This is what you end up in the database, is basically each one of those little, if you see the numbers there, each of those numbers corresponds to a segment of roadway, and each of those has a unique pavement condition index assigned to it. So the PCI is affected by the surface condition, moisture and drainage, which is the big enemy, subgrade condition. You need to have a good subgrade, is adequately compacted, and there are things like expansive clays that can cause problems with roadways, organics in the subgrade can cause problems, traffic over time. It's not the cars doing the damage. It's one heavy truck. So you can run 1,000 cars on a road and do almost no damage to it. One heavy truck does way more damage than 1,000 cars, okay? So it's really the heavy trucks that damage our pavement. And then the age, talked about oxidation, and then, you know, prior maintenance history goes into that. So what does it look like? Well, top left, very poor. You can see alligator-like cracking, all kinds of problems, uneven surface. The bitumines have been deteriorated by ultraviolet radiation from the sun. Poor is in the upper right. It corresponds to a PCI of 25 to 40. Fair condition is lower left. That's 50 to 60. You can see it's in much better condition, the surface. And then very good is 70 to an 85. They start out at about 95, just because paving isn't perfect. So, all right, looking at our current system analysis, and where does 63, if you take into account all 757 miles of city streets? That's lane miles, I should say, and that's basically if you're to do a two-lane road from here to Los Angeles. That's how many roads we have to take care of for eight and a half million dollars. And so you can see these are broken down into different categories. We've, by and large, not in too bad of shape. 63 is good. Backlog is anything with a pavement condition index below 40. So that's in the poor and very poor categories, and right now, we're at 22%. But let's break this down further. Arterial roadways, collectors, and locals.
Are you saying that we're 22% are in the poor category?
Poor or very poor.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So arterials are in great shape, 76. That's very good. And so those are main streets into town. It's a gateway into the community. Those are in pretty good shape.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was just going to, can you give some definitions around, as you go through this, when you're defining like arterials and collectors and local, like, can you give us some street names so that we kind of have some reference for that?
Yeah, happy to do that. Willow Creek Road, 69 coming into town, 89, those are arterials. White Spar heading out of town. Those are arterial roadways. Collectors are kind of in the middle. So I'm, let's say.
Gail Gardner?
Gail, I think that.
I see some nodding back there.
Gail Gardner. I'm new here, so bear with me. It's kind of those that aren't their main arteries into and out of town, but they're not really local residential street. There's ones in the middle.
Sure.
Copper Basin, Thumbute.
Rosser.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, thank you. Those of you that lived here a lot longer, thank you. And then local, that's local residential street, or those are, it can be an industrial park or something like that, or an office complex. Those can be local as well. And so as shown here, arterials are in great shape. Our collectors are in pretty good shape as well. Locals are not in bad shape, but as you can see, we've got a very diverse portfolio in our roadway network there. We have everything from ones that we've just possibly resurfaced to those that have been neglected for a while. And so you can see on that pie chart on the far right that we have a 29% backlog of roadways that are in poor or very poor condition. Let's look at downtown. I've heard a number of stakeholders say that we want our downtown to look really nice for, it's good for the businesses, it's good for the visitors, it's good for our own residents that live and work there. You know, it's really, you know, that's what attracts people here. We want it to look nice. We want it to be in good shape, and by and large, we are. If you look, there's a lot of green and yellow and light green. Those are all good.
Councilwoman can tell me a question.
So I love this subject, by the way. In fact, many, many years ago, I had this very same conversation with our city manager, Michael Lamar. You know, the other thing I want to point out, you had a graph back there where the red, the, you know, the streets that still need work, that graph was low. I'm going to say 16 years ago, had we seen that same graph, because we did not have that software then, that would have been off the charts. I walked every one of these streets over the last 17 years, and I'm going to tell you, it's nice to have great pavement, but there's so many other things that come out of having this good pavement. And I'm talking about, in particular, in the downtown historic areas. My street up on Washington Goodwin is a great example. It took me five years to get that road project done. But what happened, not only do we have nice, beautiful streets now, we have great sidewalks, and everything you don't see below the surface has been replaced. But the, what it did to the neighborhood is really remarkable. I just want you to know. It added, you know, 20 to 30% on the cost of the value of all the homes in the neighborhood. When you drive into an old historic neighborhood and the streets are crumbling down, the sidewalks are non-existent, they're lifted, they look horrible, that has a big effect on value. So just having this software, I have watched over the years, because this is something I'm uniquely interested in, how the pavement projects, and I believe, Michael, you told me this, when we got that program, how you were going to start in the middle of the downtown area and the historic and work our way out. And I have to say, you guys have been doing an excellent job. And I've watched these neighborhoods renovate for many reasons, but that's been a big indicator of who goes into what neighborhood to restore what home is, are the conditions on the street. So I just want to thank you for your foresight, but also thanking you and all these years later and watching this come to fruition. It's been really nice for people like me in the business. So thank you.
Councilmember Rusing.
I agree with Connie. It's a constant battle here against urban blight, urban decay, especially in our historic districts. And maintaining our streets such as with this program helps the community overall. And like they say, prevention is the best medicine. So that's what we're doing here.
Thank you, and thank you for your comments. And I totally, oh, I really agree. And so looking at the downtown, there are some areas that we need to focus on. One is Willis from Marina East to Arizona, which is off the map there. That one is scheduled to be done in the spring. And if you look, so that's right here and off the map. And then down here, there is Cortez and Aubrey, right here. Those are going to be done also in the spring. Those are in poor shape now. And then McCormick and Sheldon right here. We need a waterline project to go in ahead of that, so it needs to coincide with that or be after it, most likely coincide with it. We don't want to pave that now and then go cut it in a couple of years or three years or whenever, and we do a waterline replacement and destroy a brand-new roadway. So that's right now tentatively scheduled for FY '25.
Mayor Broton.
Thank you, Mayor. Ashley, can I ask you a question? When it gets to that poor or very poor level, is that at a point where you do have to do the reconstruction of the roadway at that point, or is it on a case-by-case basis?
I think it's on a case-by-case basis. Very poor, generally yes. Poor, I would say case-by-case basis. I've got some experts here.
On some of the poor, Jerry Greenfield.
Jerry's our project manager for pavement management. Would you like to take a stab at that? Come on.
No.
Don't be shy. We don't bite.
You put the tie on, you may as well.
He's going to ask for money.
Yeah, he's asking for money.
Hello. Not asking for money, but I'll take it if you have it. So with the poor, very poor, those are the backlog roads. We obviously don't have the funds to pave all those roads, so we have some tools in our box to help us keep those in serviceable condition, such as like a surface treatment, like a chip seal or a microseal with some, you know, various asphalt repairs, to hopefully keep them up out of that 40 and below range. And that way, people look at it, drive on it, they feel like it's a good road. So that's what we have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Jerry just assumed that program about six months ago? About six months ago. So he like, I am in a new role, learning, but Jerry's been with us for a while. He was an inspection supervisor. So anyway, so downtown is in pretty good shape with a few minor areas that we're going to work on. All right, budget. So right now, we appropriate $8.5 million of the Streets Fund in, towards pavement management. And it's comprised of 1% transportation sales tax through 2035, which is by and large, the, most of our revenues, 78%, come from that transportation excise tax. And then the Highway User Revenue Fund, which is 14% of our revenues, and the miscellaneous revenue, things like our fees for pavement cuts, permits, like encroachment permits, things like that, interest, interest earnings, that's the 8%. So that's basically what we've been spending. Now, this is where the rubber hits the road, pardon the pun, but basically, the message is we're in good shape and we're headed in the right direction. Back in 2019 when we did this, we were at a PCI of 60. And it was recommended that we spend eight and a half million dollars a year on pavement management, and that would improve us one point per year. So in five years, or 2014, we'd be at a 65. Well, where are we today in 2022? Well, we're at a 63. So we're right on schedule. My recommendation is to continue to spend eight and a half million a year for the time being. And where that will get us in five years, so in 2027, we will be system-wide at a 72. But maybe council wants to do more. Well, you can increase that. Does this say nine and a half million? What does that buy you? That would be a PCI of 75 in five years. Or maybe council says this isn't really that important to us. Other things are more important with the Streets Fund, and so we want to spend it on other things. And that's fine. We could spend two and a half million dollars a year and remain at a 64. So, because we already are doing the eight and a half million dollar program this year, right? So we're going to be a 64 by the end of the year. So that's another option on the table. My recommendation is let's stay the course, one point per year. Let's continue, and we're headed the right direction. It's a long time before we have to reevaluate the transportation sales tax, 2035. And so, but with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mayor Broton.
Thank you, Mayor. Ashley, I, like Connie, am interested in this topic. It's too bad not all the people in the audience stayed. I guess my question to you is, with this projection that you have up on the screen right now, marching out to that 72 number, or if we moved up in our allocation to say a bit more to get to that, you know, another million dollars to get to that 75 number, is my understanding correct that, because when I was looking at the chart before, it looked like the area that had kind of the greater propensity towards poor or very poor qualities is local roads. And those are probably, and understandably so, we're not prioritizing those. But those are also, I guess, my sensitivity has, those are roads that people live on. And so the same people may be reaching out to me again and again, saying, hey, my road is in a grade. And I've actually talked to Brian. There's a street right next to my house that I, they all know that I'm on council, and they frequently say, when are you ever going to fix this road? What good are you? And I try to explain that there's a pavement preservation process and that there's this thing. But is my understanding is correct that as we get that higher quality, that essentially, that quality is kind of radiating outward? I guess what I'm thinking is that if we're doing the right work to spend the lower amounts of money on the newer roads, and I think that's the thing, I really appreciate you qualifying that, too, because there have been times when we've had, you know, Tim Sherwood here, come and say, we're going to go do this pavement preservation project over here. And people say, didn't we just build this subdivision? And it's very useful to know that there's a rhyme and a reason to that. And I think it's very useful to have that education being going out, not just to us, but to the public, saying, yeah, we're doing this because we spend the money now, so we don't spend a ton later. But is my characterization correct that it will, that quality will radiate out throughout the community, or does it not work that way?
So we don't ignore the local streets. We do several of them every year. We just try not to do them at the expense of keeping our arterials in great shape and our collectors in pretty good shape, right? So it's a balance. And every year, we're knocking off some of that backlog of local streets. I think the data show that we have enough money to do that at eight and a half million a year. We're going to continue to see that improvement. We get these calls, too. A lot of the time, we get calls from residents, when are you going to come pave my street? And so it's a balancing act. They may question, why are we doing one of these techniques on a road that's in fairly good shape as opposed to resurfacing this street that they live on? And we have to answer that question, and we answer it just the way we just explained it to you, is that we've got a whole system to maintain. If we were to do worst first, which is a gut reaction, right, just go look at all the really crummy roadways in people's neighborhoods, and just focus on those at the expense of arterials and collectors, well, guess what? Then the downtown, the gateways into the core of the city, those are going to start to degrade. And the expense to get those back up is really high. So it's almost something you would have to spend a lot of money on later to recover from, and we don't want to do that. We're headed the right direction. And, you know, so my recommendation is let's stay the course. We do focus on those when, you know, when the time is due. We've got some money that we can spend on local streets. We knock several of those off every single year. You know, we don't just take what IMS is feeding us and do it, okay? You know, we don't just take what IMS is feeding us and do it, okay? We field-truth it. So Jerry or somebody else, you know, one of the inspectors, they're gonna go put boots on the ground and look at it. Did IMS give us a good reading here? Yeah, usually they did. Occasionally, IMS wasn't aware of this, that, or the other that happened. And now, maybe it's not in as good a shape as when it was driven in 2019, for whatever reason. And so we make adjustments accordingly. Or maybe this roadway was forecasted to degrade to where you need a treatment today, and that's what the model's recommending. But Jerry goes out there and looks at it and says, wait a minute, we don't need to do that yet. We can wait another year. So we field-truth it, is what I like, that's a phrase I like to use, is we field-truth it to take the data out of the model, which is a great start, and subjective start. And then you go boots on the ground, look at it and say, yeah, this makes sense. But sometimes we make some adjustments. And then the other things we look at are, we do focus on downtown. We know how important that is. And then, and then the other thing we focus on is our upcoming capital improvement program. Last thing we want to do is resurface the roadway and go in within five years later and cut it for a utility project or a storm drain project, right? So, so we have to take what the model's feeding us, field-truth it, look, you know, boots on the ground. And then we look at the upcoming capital program for all of capital projects, not just streets, for all different capital projects, and say, okay, well, you know, is there gonna be a project in here? Can there be some economy of scale of, let's say, we're doing a utility project and we're resurfacing the roadway at the same time? That actually doesn't even come out of the Streets Fund. That comes out of the Water Fund. Okay? So, because it's really restoring the pavement for a waterline replacement, for example, or maybe an increasing capacity. So, so that's the other thing we do. And that, I think at the end, yields an ideal program. Of course, you know, we listen to what our residents tell us and we listen to what primarily you tell us. And, and we try to be accommodating of any, anything that, any direction we're getting from council.
Thank you for that, Ashley. And I appreciate the clarity. And by the way, I love the whole premise of how this program is working. I didn't want to misconstrue any of that. I like that it's very data-driven and then also data can misalign you sometimes. So it's good that we're doing the field-truthing, as you said. So thank you for all that context.
Yeah, I do want to mention the fact that about five years ago, this was one of my pet project ideas. And I met with the city manager, the previous Public Works Director, to say, it's not just a matter of the condition of the roadway. It's a condition of the overall condition of the neighborhoods. When we have businesses that come to Prescott to evaluate whether they might want to relocate here or expand, add a new business component, they almost always come down to the Courthouse Plaza first. And then that first impression is always such a positive one that they start exploring nearby areas. And back then, we had some real deteriorated neighborhoods, whether it was the Dexter neighborhood or Connie's street over there and Washington and things like that. So you take a quick survey of nearby streets and you say, boy, these places are in rough shape. Maybe, maybe I shouldn't make that investment. So that's when we contracted with IMS to start doing the laser measurement so that we had a really reliable understanding of the condition of each one of these neighborhoods, the roads and the roadways, whether they're arterials or feeder or whatever. And then I said, why don't we add a proximity component to the measurements so that we get a little priority to streets and neighborhoods that are closer to the downtown core area? That way, as we improve those areas, just like we did over there on, on Washington, and it brings up the overall appearance and the value and the willingness to potentially either buy or upgrade those homes or invest in, in the city in general. In the Dexter neighborhood, we put some CDBG money into curbs and gutters. We improved the roadways. And then we did a, a large community cleanup where we allowed people to bring the, the old sofa off of the front, front yard and other areas and bring them to the high school. And, and we saw general improvement in those areas. And we also saw consequential investment in some small apartment complexes and things like that, that helped our workforce housing needs. So I think with the Lucidity Program, it, it is able to look at where are the real bad areas, but also be able to say, how do we invest in a project that includes three, four, five, six streets at once so that we can have a better average return on investment, bring up those average numbers, and then make sure that we aren't piecemealing ourselves to inefficient investment? So I think that's all starting to really show some good results. And I think if we continue to look not only at the roadway index, but what it means to us as a community, whether it's the value of the properties in those neighborhoods or the overall impression that businesses will say, I think I want to invest here because I can get a good return on my investment. And maybe I'll put in a 15-unit apartment complex or another 20-unit over here, rather than having the real controversial issues of 400-room major projects. I'd much rather have 20, 20-unit projects than one giant 400-unit project that causes so much controversy. And almost all of those are infill developments where we already have public safety, we already have infrastructure available, so we're not expanding our public safety component of our budget. So I thank you for that. And I, I think we're on the right track here. And we probably should support the continued investment of increasing those overall numbers, average numbers. And also recognizing that we will sometimes discover some really deteriorated small areas that really needed, need to have some quick response to that. So that'll always be a, a certain small component of your overall pavement management budget. Councilman Tenny? Actually, I think it's Councilman Moore's next up.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick comment on two, two issues. I can remember several years ago when they finally got to Ruth Street. And it didn't last like a year or two. And I know there's a lot of areas in town where we have springs and we have a lot of water that seems to come up underneath the road. And I think maybe that's one of the challenges with Ruth Street, because I know there's some springs right along Ruth Street and along Iron Springs Road, along Willow Creek Road. And we have a sump pump underneath our building on Willow Creek Road, and it shoots out water every minute or so, every day, 24 hours a day. So I imagine, I mean, it seems like Ruth Street just constantly needs to be repaired because it just doesn't hold up. I don't know. It's a heavily used street with a high school and a lot of activity, buses. But my question to you is, is there something on your website, or could you put something together on your website that would maybe be beneficial to homeowners so they could look ahead and say, oh, I see that my street's gonna get done in 2005 or '06 or '07? Because, and you had a map in your presentation today of Prescott Heights, and it had Delano and Cedarwood and a couple of the streets. Well, I think Laurel Lane is probably one of the worst streets in the city. I don't know which, if Laurel Lane is like you're riding a buck and bronco when you're going on that street. It is horrible. And I've had people ask me, when is that street gonna get done? And I have no idea. But it'd be nice if there was someplace where we could look and say, oh, it's projected to be done in this timeframe.
We talked about that a month ago? Maybe two weeks ago?
Really?
Exactly that very thing. Yes, we have an annual program right now.
Yeah.
Asked Jerry to build a five-year program. And so every year, there's been an annual program, that's just how we've done it here. But I want us to look five years out. Now, it's tentative because things can change, right? But at least it'll give people a general idea of when they're gonna get to my street, right? And put that up on the website, absolutely. That's our plan.
Just a thought.
No, it's a great idea. And, yeah.
It maybe helped because, I mean, it was obvious to see your chart that, you know, where we were deficient was in, was in residential areas. You know, that's the biggest need.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's where it affects people the most.
And, you know, one of the other things I didn't mention in my presentation, but we do, is to try to, you know, one mobilization and you do a neighborhood, sometimes you're in a neighborhood and you're doing a few streets in that neighborhood. And there might be one or two in there that are in the same proximity, but not quite do, but they're almost do. We'll probably do those while we're in there. Just because, again, we're kind of doing a package of one mobilization.
Well, I know you did that last year in The Ranch. You did, you had a big emphasis last year in The Ranch. Of course, those streets were very old.
Yeah, and so it makes sense because there's one mobilization for contractor. And while they're in there working, sometimes it's easier to pick up an extra two or three streets in the neighborhood that maybe aren't quite ready, even though the other ones are. And so we, we might, there's just some economy of scale of doing it that way. So again, that's, that's not taking what the model says directly and doing it. It's using this a little bit and doing it a little bit smarter.
Go drive Laurel Lane, you'll have a real ride.
I have high clearance and all-wheel drive, so it should be fun.
Thank you, Mayor. As long as we're mentioning our, our pet projects. Drive on Poli on your way to Laurel Lane, you'll never get to Laurel Lane. Usually when I say stuff to Councilman Montoya, he looks at me like, that's a stupid guy. But I mentioned Poli, and he's like, oh, yeah.
I live over there.
For the amount of traffic it gets, I'd be surprised if there's a worse street in town than that. But I know it's on your, on your, you shared, there is something like this, right? That projects over the next couple of years has been shared with us at some point. I think that's on, on the...
We have an annual plan and we do share that.
Yeah, so.
Spring, all right, we're on it.
There you go. Bad humor aside, I just wanted to thank you for being so proactive about this instead of reactive. It's awesome to know that there's a great process that was put in place prior to you and that you're carrying it forward. You've got such great folks working for you and with you. That is just fantastic. We appreciate you more than we can say. And, you know, Connie mentioned, Maura mentioned it, others as well. This is one of the most visible parts of our city. There's, there's a lot of folks have no idea what the city does, other than the streets. And I realize that when they turn on the tap water, that's us and things like that. It's, it's all about streets for them. They're, oh, yeah, library, who does that? You know, there's way more to it than, than just the streets. But that's number one in most people's minds. And so it's great that, to see the data that shows that we're in really good shape and trending in the right direction as well, and it's intentional and really well done. So thank you all so much for that.
Councilwoman can tell me?
Don't listen to them. Stay on course with Willis because of the tourism dollars that that brings to this city. Willis is like a series of Band-Aids. Have you ever walked from, you know, the indigenous people's...
Ignore all these residents. Let's cater to the tourists. I'm with Connie. I changed my mind.
Well, the money, the money talks, okay? We generate so much money from tourism in the downtown area. Just don't leave us and go off to Laurel, okay? Thank you.
Do I hear $9.00 million? Do I hear 10?
Ashley, have you concluded your presentation?
I have concluded. And I'm sensing stay the course, $8.5 million? Is that what you want to see in your budget?
Well, I think...
Certainly not less.
For an initial response, I think for the most part, we're pretty supportive of that. Whether we can give you a total green light depends on our full analysis of next year's budget.
Sure, okay. Fair enough. Thank you. That's what we'll evaluate and bring forward when we do the budget soon.
I would just say, I, from my perspective up here, I'd say, keep both options on the table. And I'd like to see both options and, and see what, I mean, some of this, I'm looking at Mark Woodfill over there. Some of it depends on what we can afford, right? Like, I mean, and that's, that's where the rubber meets the railroad. So, but I would like to see both options because I think what you heard up here between Connie and, and Clark, there's, there's, my, the big thing I wrote down is, is there's a balance to be achieved, it sounds like. And so meeting that balance may mean opening up our wallets a little bit wider. So I, I would be open to hearing more of that personally, just speaking for myself only.
Thank you. I will say that the Streets Fund right now doesn't have a big fund balance in it, okay? So we have been spending the money that, that we're getting. That's a good thing.
That's right.
That means we're executing the projects that are in the CIP. So that's a good thing. If we do allocate more to pavement management, it comes at the expense of other things that are also paid by the Streets Fund, which are, that's a long list. And when we go through the budget, we can talk about, okay, yeah, you can increase pavement management, it comes at the expense of this. Because we don't have a whole bunch of, a big fund balance that we can just say, okay, we'll budget more. We don't have that. So it's coming out of somewhere else, especially with all the cost inflation that we've seen, particularly in materials. But, you know, we've all seen it. But it really impacts what we do in a big way. And so, you know, maybe 30% cost increases over, you know, a year or two ago. So, so anyway, that impacts our ability to, to deliver as well. But, yeah, we can have those conversations in the budget. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Couch, again. So our study session here is adjourned.